Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of Gravesham Borough Council's Finance Audit Committee. I intend to go through some housekeeping matters. This meeting is being livestreamed via YouTube and recorded. The recording will be uploaded to YouTube within two working days where it can be accessed by everyone. Members, please use the microphone in front of you when talking and ensure you turn your microphone off when you've finished speaking. Another member or officer will not be able to speak if your microphone is still on. Please note that the council's visual equipment may, on some occasions, focus on or near to the public gallery area. Therefore, those in attendance at this meeting may be filmed but recorded. Attendance at this meeting signifies your agreement to this. If, as a member of the public, you do not wish to be filmed or recorded, please inform a council staff member in attendance, and we will try to assist where reasonably possible. On hearing the fire alarm, we ask all attendees to immediately evacuate the building. Please evacuate via the nearest fire exits and make your way to the community square outside of the main reception doors. Okay, we'll start with apologies for absence, please, Ben.
Chair, we have apology from councillor Samir Gisal, councillor Jordan Mead substituting.
Cool, welcome. The next order of business is to sign the minutes of the previous meeting. That was agreement?
Agreed.
Agreed, thank you. The next, any interest members may have in the items contained in the agenda. When declaring an interest, a member must state what their interest is. No, okay. Item five is to consider whether any items in part A of the agenda should be considered in private or any items in part B in public. I don't believe there are anything qualifying, but, no, okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to item six, which is the internal audit and counter fraud annual surveys, which James will present, and is for us to note.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, some of our performance measures are linked to satisfaction with the service, and we issue surveys to gauge the wider level of satisfaction across the organisation. I don't propose to take you through each individual question, but we'll give you an overview of the results from each survey, and I'll pause after each one for questions. So the internal audit survey was issued to service managers and hire, including members of this committee, as they are most likely to interact with internal audit. Although service managers were encouraged to pass the survey to operational managers and team leaders who may have had interaction with internal audit. We had twenty-two responses, which is significantly higher than previous years, and this increase is attributed to a marked increase in responses from other operational managers and supervisors. That does make it difficult to calculate a percentage response rate, as we don't have a clear picture of who actually received the survey. The results detailed in Appendix Two, starting on page nine. The twenty-two responses were spread across all directorates of the council, although none were received from members. Understanding the role of internal audit and awareness of the charter both show a decrease in comparison to previous years. There's also been a marked increase in the number of people indicating that training on the role of internal audit would be beneficial. These results are linked to the increasing responses from operational managers, who may not have been as involved as service managers, or at least not as frequently. There was also an increase in respondents not feeling sufficiently involved in the preparation of the audit plan, and also an increase in the number not feeling they received sufficient communication. Risk consultation and planning communication is again directed to service managers, and although the negative responses came from more operational managers, what we will need to consider for future surveys is whether certain questions are only directed at specific respondents to ensure people are not asked for their satisfaction on areas where they have no involvement. Demonstrating compliance with the core principles has shown a decline, but again, this is linked to responses from operational managers. Most of the comments received were to say they did not know enough about the service, although three comments were centred around the team not having sufficient resources, which may be a consequence of the resourcing issues experienced during twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Overall satisfaction was broken down into two areas: to that satisfaction with services available and with services received. This is due to the fact that some respondents may not have had interaction with internal audit over the previous year. Services available scored an average of seven point seven seven out of ten, while services received scored an average of eight point six nine. And positive satisfaction, which is based on scores of eight or higher, from seventy-six point nine percent of the thirteen respondents who'd received services from us. The remaining twenty-three point one percent all provided neutral scores of six or seven. Now, any specific comments received are detailed in the report, along with the appropriate response, as well as any compliments received. An action plan to address highlighted areas is at Appendix Four on page thirty-three, but it should be noted that this covers actions for both internal audit and counter fraud, the results of which we'll discuss shortly, but I'll pause there for any questions on the internal audit survey.
Any questions? No, John?
So, thank you, Chair, and thank you very much, very thorough and clear report. At Appendix Four, it really helpfully does list the areas for improvement. Some of the target dates on there are rather ambitious, because I think they're all, they're all twenty twenty-five. And do you think that there are enough resources in place to achieve those target dates? And do you consider that any of them will carry significant cost to implement, particularly those that reference training? Is that something that we're going to have to get external training providers in for?
Okay, no, we believe that the dates that we've set are achievable. Some of them are, some of them are dates for the initial phase of things to happen. So obviously, meetings with HR to make arrangements for training sessions and things like that. The training itself will be delivered by officers from my team, so it'll all be done within our existing budget envelope, so there won't be any additional cost. Okay, I'll move on to the counter fraud survey then. So the results for this can be found at Appendix Three, starting on page nineteen. Now, this survey was made available to all council employees and elected members, and we received seventy-two responses, which is around a thirteen percent response rate. As with last year, a positive was the fact that most respondents were aware of the counter fraud and corruption strategy, but still only around fifty percent had seen or read it. We are in the process of updating the strategy to reflect changes to legislation coming in later this year, and we will be rolling that out to staff once approved. It was disappointing to see that over twenty percent still don't have a good awareness and understanding of the team, with awareness of some services showing a decline and around seventy percent having not had awareness training in the last twelve months. This was explained recently by our discovery that Gravesham had stopped using the iShare training platform, which is where all of our monthly sessions have been made available. So we're going to look at an alternative for that moving forward. The lack of awareness clearly influences the number of respondents still not aware of all areas that the fraud team covers, with a decline in positive responses across all but two areas of common fraud. A number, a large number haven't reported anything to the team in the last twelve months, which may be linked to their lack of awareness of what can be reported. Of those that had reported concerns, around a third stated they did not receive feedback, so we'll continue to look at how we can address this. But it should be noted, obviously, any referrals relating to housing benefit are immediately passed to the Department for Work and Pensions, and we have no control over feedback on those. We adopted a set of core principles in twenty twenty-one, and asked respondents to confirm whether they agree these are demonstrated by the team. Now, following feedback from previous surveys, we included the option to state unable to answer for those who may have had limited interaction with the service. All ten statements received at least one negative response, although the most significant number was in relation to the statement is in the right part of the council and has enough resources to effectively carry out its role, which received thirteen negative responses, closely followed by eleven negative responses in relation to the statement communicates effectively about ongoing and completed investigations. Now, based on the comments, much of this is down to people feeling we do not have sufficient resources to adequately tackle fraud, some saying we could find more if we have more resources. Other comments relate to feedback on individual referrals and publicity of our work in general. Now, we issue press releases on successful cases, but perhaps need to do more to publicise things to staff, and it's hoped that now resourcing is more settled, we will see a return to better feedback on individual cases. Satisfaction with services available scored an average of seven point two five out of ten, which is down compared to the previous two years. The nineteen respondents who confirmed having received services from the team in the last year scored an average of eight point nine five out of ten, with positive satisfaction from sixteen of those, which is roughly eighty-four percent. Obviously, that's slightly below our target of ninety percent. We've also categorised what area of work those services related to, and in those individual areas, only one, only introductory sessions scored, scores averaged below eight, with seven point five. Again, any comments received are detailed with responses as appropriate, and comments or compliments, I should say, have also been listed. As with the internal audit survey, the actions arising from this feedback are detailed in Appendix Four. Again, I'm happy to take any questions from members.
Thank you. Any questions? I just one, but, no, just one for me, James. Can you expand a little bit on the verbatim comments? When there's quite a lot of comments or a few comments around more resource being needed and more resource leading to greater or better outcomes? Can you expand a little bit on your thoughts in response to that, please?
Yes, certainly. Obviously, like pretty much every service in the council, I'd be quite happy to have more staff. This is a bit of a tricky situation for us. We don't receive any central government funding, so obviously, our work, we need to, it has to wash its face in the colloquial terms. So we always aim to achieve savings above our costs. Now, if we had more staff, the one thing I can guarantee is, yes, we would investigate more cases. Would that generate more savings? I don't know, because we cannot control the outcomes of individual cases. Some will result in savings being achieved. Sometimes we investigate things and there is no evidence of fraud. So the only guarantee we can make is that, yes, we would deal with more cases. So that's where the problem comes in. I can try and argue a business case that if I had another member of staff, for example, we could generate, I don't know, another thirty, forty thousand more in savings, but we just don't know what might come up. So it's very difficult. If central government were to give us some more funding, maybe we could look at a bit of a guarantee on that. Maybe we could look at some more staffing, but at the moment, it's striking that balance of what we can achieve and what we can bring in.
Thank you. Any other questions on this paper? No, okay. Thank you, James. We'll proceed to paper seven, which is the counter fraud annual report. And again, this one's for noting as well.
Thank you. Yeah, the annual report for counter fraud, which can be found at Appendix Two, outlines the performance of the team against the agreed work plan for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, and brings together the information provided in the three updates presented to the committee during the year, along with additional information relating to work completed since the last update. I'll mention now that formatting appears to have gone a bit awry, as the number of the sections, the numbering of the sections is incorrect from section six onwards, so apologies for that. Section three, starting on page forty, provides some context with information around national reports on fraud, which may be of benefit to the committee. Section four, on page forty-one, details the resources available to the team during the year. The projected resources at the start of the year, which took into account the working days of all staff, less annual leave, allowances for training, administration, et cetera, was two hundred and seventy-four days would be available for counter fraud work. However, a decision was taken in year to direct thirty percent of this resource to internal grievance and disciplinary investigations. As of thirty-first of March twenty twenty-five, a hundred and ninety-three point eight days of chargeable activity were undertaken, with one point six percent spent on fraud awareness and prevention, twenty-four point three percent on proactive counter fraud activity. I've written down that, that doesn't make any sense. I must have a typo there, because I've written a hundred and sixteen point eight percent on the investigation activity. I apologise for that one, if it's in the report, and thirteen point eight percent on other counter fraud activity. Now, section five, starting on page forty-one, provides details of all the work undertaken in the areas under the fraud awareness and prevention category. Members were presented with the latest fraud risk register in February, and we have highlighted the top ten risks in this report. As noted in the report, the fact that residual scores are high does not necessarily mean that controls are not in place or are ineffective. It simply means that this is a potential target area for fraud where we must direct our counter fraud results. Now, activity in the area of fraud awareness has been limited, mainly due to the sessions being cancelled for lack of sign-up. And as I mentioned before, when discussing the survey results, we now know why. Now, section six, which is incorrectly labelled as section five, starting on page forty-three, details the proactive activity that has been undertaken. Members will note that there has been a lot of activity in relation to rights buy applications, which spiked in the latter part of twenty twenty-four, ahead of a reduction in the available discount. And the team have continued with proactive visits to out-of-borough temporary accommodation placements. Desktop activity, followed by subsequent site visits with the revenues team, identified forty-eight unrated business premises, but the backlog with the valuation office agency means we cannot currently quantify the value of that activity. Section seven, starting at the bottom of page forty-four, provides a summary of the results from investigations undertaken during the year, including the savings identified and other actions, such as a recovery of two council properties, one of which is linked to an ongoing prosecution, a waiting list removal and the closure of a temporary accommodation placement. Now, section eight gives a brief summary of the other counter fraud activity linked to liaison with DWP and other investigative bodies. The team had eleven performance measures for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, which are detailed in the table at section nine, starting on page forty-five. Days spent on professional training is higher than anticipated, but takes into account the induction of two new members of staff and the proportion of estimated resources delivered, while only seventy-one percent is in line with the thirty percent of resource being redirected to internal investigations. Overall satisfaction is slightly below target, as I mentioned, with eighty-four percent against the target of ninety percent. Savings identified from cases are still far in excess of the cost of the counter fraud result, so we continue to provide good value for money. I'm happy to take any questions members may have.
Cool. Derek?
Thank you, yes. I'm referring to page forty and page forty-one. On page forty, it talks about the amount of investigations, under nine investigations. But it saved three hundred and fourteen thousand pounds, so that backs up what you're saying. If you have more resources, more investigations, it does generate more revenue. And on section four, they're talking about the split, seventy-six percent Medway, twenty-four percent Gravesham. And I'm wondering whether that split is fair or should it be investigated or looked at? Because we are headed towards a unitary, so I would have thought it would be a three-way split or something like that. So I'm wondering whether that split is adequate for where we are today.
Yeah, when the shared service was created, every, the percentage split for everything, for both internal audit and fraud, was sixty-four percent for Medway and thirty-six percent for Gravesham. Medway having the slightly larger proportion, obviously because it's a much bigger authority, more services to cover things like that. In twenty twenty-three, Medway took the decision to add an additional two investigators. Gravesham at that point in time decided they didn't want to buy into that additional resource. So what we've done is the, the service, the counter fraud manager role and the intelligence officer roles remain at thirty-six percent of their time goes to Gravesham. We've now got four investigators instead of two. So what we've done is, instead of it being thirty-six percent of two officers, it's eighteen percent of four. The idea being that Gravesham, all four officers still share all kinds of work across both councils for resilience. So all we've done is we've amended that percentage slightly, which means overall, Gravesham is around twenty-four percent of the overall counter fraud activity. So Gravesham are still getting the same level of resource and at roughly the same cost, obviously subject to any increases in salaries and things like that annually. You're still getting the same level of resource they've had from day one with the shared service being created. The percentage has only changed because of those additional officers. Obviously, the amount of work that we deal with Gravesham, it's under constant review. So if I felt that we need to increase the resource for Gravesham, I can have that conversation with the section one five one officer, and then we can look at adjusting the percentages, or do we look at increase, again, increasing the amount of staff that we've got?
Thank you. Any other questions? I've just got one, actually, just came back to the, I guess, reflecting on the last paper, and we talked about results, and just the last question to my results. Can you talk about, I guess, the merits of having thirty percent of the counter fraud results not doing counter fraud and doing other matters?
Yeah, so as part of the balancing the budget activity, every service was asked to make a ten percent saving on their budgets. Now, for me, which for me equated to about twenty-two, twenty-three thousand for Gravesham. However, for me to save twenty-three thousand for Gravesham, because of the way the shared working arrangements work, I would have had to save around sixty-odd thousand overall, because obviously, any underspends, overspends, et cetera, are all shared as per the percentages. That obviously would mean staffing losses, which I couldn't do. So we started to look at how can we achieve efficiencies elsewhere to save the council that money. So a decision, a decision was made to move thirty percent of resource to the investigation of internal grievance and disciplinary matters, which is something we'd already been doing at Medway for around a year. The target or the aim being to try and save that twenty-two thousand. The results of that are that last year, we estimate that Gravesham has saved around forty thousand during twenty twenty-four, twenty-five by us undertaking that work. The reason for that is the, the average time for the investigations, so the average time period, so the time period over which they're completed, has stayed roughly the same. But there's less resource being directed to those investigations, because they're professionally trained investigators, they take less time to do it. We also have less need for support services, because we can record interviews, we don't have to have minute takers, so there's additional people in meetings, things like that. Some cases are being dealt with quicker, which means in certain circumstances, staff may be suspended while the investigations are being conducted. Obviously, the longer those investigations take, the more days are being lost to someone being sat at home. So there's been efficiency savings there that's got staff back to work faster. And in certain circumstances, where the unfortunate outcome is that the person has to exit the business, that being done that little bit quicker means we're not paying salaries for longer. So, as I say, I think the total was around forty-four thousand pounds estimated to have been saved last year.
Lovely, thank you. Any further questions on paper seven? No, thank you, James. We'll move on to paper eight, which is, this is for endorsing the work of the team and the opinion from the head of internal audit and counter fraud.
Thank you. Yeah, the annual report, which can be found at Appendix Two, outlines the performance of the internal audit team against the agreed work plans for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, and bring, again, brings together the information provided in the three updates presented to the committee during the year, along with any additional information since our last update. Now, section three, starting on page fifty-two, details the resources available to the team during the year. The original plans were based upon projected resources at the start of the year, which, again, as we've come for all, took into account the working days of all staff, less allowances for leave, training, administration, et cetera. Now, that projection forecast that three hundred and eighty-five days would be available for internal audit work. As members will be aware from our previous updates, we've had a number of resourcing issues during the year, with one auditor leaving in August, one retiring in February, as well as another one being off for a significant period of the year. The steps have been taken in year to try and address the resource gaps, including a secondment for counter fraud, resulting in three hundred and ten days of chargeable activity being undertaken, which is around eighty-one percent of our original projection. Now, ninety-eight percent of that activity at that time related to assurance activity, with the remaining two percent being consultancy activity. As the council's chief audit executive, I am required to deliver an opinion on the adequacy of the council's governance arrangements, framework of risk management and system of internal control. The basis for the opinion is formed in part by the internal audit assurance work undertaken throughout the year, but also considers other forms of assurance, including external inspections, which all feeds into the process for delivering the annual governance statement. Now, these factors are detailed in section four, starting on page fifty-three. And I've reflected that where we have identified weaknesses, the actions for improvement have been accepted by management with a commitment for them to be implemented. Now, as mentioned in the report, the opinion is based on a limited scope due to the volume and breadth of work completed since the last opinion, as a consequence of our resourcing issues. However, on the basis of the overall evidence, I have given a positive annual opinion, which can be found on page fifty-four, going on to page fifty-five. Now, section five on page fifty-five provides the real detail of the work undertaken throughout the year. As you'll see in the initial bullet points, the agreed plan was amended during the year to take account of the changes to the results available, and the committee approved those changes in year. The tables in section fifty-six, in section six, page fifty-six onwards, show the results of each of the planned assurance review for members' consideration and the current position for any reviews that are yet to have reports finalised with clients. You'll note that the out term for plan delivery as thirty-first of March was seventy-one percent against the target of ninety-five percent. All reviews have since been completed, and we are working hard to clear a backlog of quality control work. Now, this is followed by three tables commencing on page sixty-two, that detail the responsive or alternative assurance and consultancy work undertaken during the year. The team had thirteen performance measures for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, which are detailed in the quality assurance and improvement programme. Now, those performance measures are listed in the table at section six, starting on page sixty-three. Some key things to point out, so IA three, the high number of days linked to professional training is due to the fact that we have a number of auditors undertaking apprenticeships as we build upon our new career progression frameworks and the professional expertise within the service. IA seven shows that the proportion of estimated resources delivered was eighty-one percent, as I've mentioned, which is again linked to the resource impacts in section three that couldn't be predicted at the start of the year. Measures IA eleven and IA twelve relate to the actions agreed throughout the course of audit reviews, and you'll see that eighty-seven percent were implemented during the year, which is forty-seven out of fifty-four. The details of the actions agreed and those completed can all be found in the table at section seven, commencing on page sixty-six. The table commencing on page sixty-seven shows that two actions that were more than six months overdue as of thirty-first of March have since been implemented, and another two that were due to be reviewed by a management team as part of the quarter one follow-up process reporting, to basically to address unexpected delays. Finally, section eight on page sixty-nine provides a very brief update on Finally, section eight on page sixty nine provides a very brief update on progress with the current year work plan, uh, all of which are either now underway or at planning stage and one that has had field work completed. Uh, I'm happy to take any questions from members.
Cool. Thank you. Excellent.
Thank you, Chair. Um, thank you, James. Great report. Um, I just wanted to ask, so some audits, including cybersecurity and payroll, et cetera, were delayed or dropped. Um, are there assurances that control risks in these areas are being monitored through other means? Thank you.
Yes, um, obviously, we, we, we had to make some tough decisions, uh, about what we did and didn't carry out. Now, cybersecurity, uh, the, I have, I obviously spoke with the head of IT. There is regular penetration testing, uh, being undertaken to make sure that the, uh, controls around that area are effective. They also have a new service that is monitoring the system. And recently, he mentioned that someone, genuinely a member of staff, who, for, for reasons unknown to most of us, decided to try and access their emails while they were on holiday. Within minutes, the IT team had a notification that someone was trying to access the network from outside the country. Um, so that proves that that's working well. There's also been recent activity with a sim, a simulated phishing exercise that's shown a marked improvement on and it, when it's been done previously, so we can take assurance from all of that activity. But I appreciate some of these things are big issues and, and we're, we're obviously, uh, we haven't looked at those yet, but, but there are alternative forms of assurance in place.
Thank you. Further questions? I've got a couple, if not. Um, on page fifty four, under risk management, where it says that the key finding from the review was that service and corporate risk processes are operating independently. Can you reflect a little bit on that and talk about sort of the action that's, um, can be taken to address that, please?
Yeah, so that review was completed a while ago and there are actions in place which are detailed further down in the report. I'm just trying to think of page number. Um. Uh, so yeah, it's on page, sorry, page sixty six of your pack. Um, on the thirty first of March, there were two actions outstanding. Um, as far as I'm aware, there, that progress has been made on those. Uh, but I'd have to check and confirm exact whether they've actually been completed, but I know progress was being made. I just haven't been able to check what the current position is on those.
Okay, thank you. Um, on page fifty seven, um, when we talk about the asset management, um, it says that we haven't got an accurate and upstate record of council's land and building assets. So have you got a timeline on when we'd be able to have that? It's actions from fifteen asset management or reference fifteen?
Uh, in, in terms of when that's going to be available, I'd have to check with the service, but what, what we've identified here is, um, this may be where there's a slight difference in what's held for accounting purposes and what's held by the property team. Obviously, there's material, materiality thresholds that is potentially certain land assets don't, land assets don't meet the, um, financial thresholds and therefore aren't recorded by finance as part of the accounting process, but obviously are still maintained, uh, by the property team. So I think it's just a case of the reconciliation happening between those, just to see if there are any anomalies that need to be sorted out.
Great, thank you. So on, on both those actions then, we can, we can minute them and return to them at the next meeting or future meeting, get an update, please.
Yeah, uh, uh, all of our update reports include updates on, um, the status of the follow-up process. So you'll see, uh, in the next, and in the next update in September, uh, whether those have been completed or whether they're still outstanding.
Yeah, I, I was thinking more the, uh, due date and then actual commitment to a date to have them done.
Um, I can double check what dates were agreed for those, uh, because obviously when we finalize, the report says an agreed implementation date and that's the point we follow up. So I'd, I'd have to look at the report and see when those were due.
That's great. Thank you, James. Um, okay, any further questions on paper eight? No, thank you, James. Um, the next paper is paper nine, Treasury Management Annual Review, which is one of my favourites. Um, might be anyone, but my favourites at least, um, and this is for noting.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so the Treasury Management Annual Review starts on page seventy one of your agenda pack. So as part of SIFF's Code of Practice for Treasury Management, we're required to produce a minimum of three reports on Treasury Management. The first being the statement itself, then the mid-year review report, and the third being this report, which looked backwards over the last twelve months. The Treasury Strategy Statement for the twenty four, twenty five was presented to Finance and Audit Committee in February twenty four and agreed by full council on the twentieth of February twenty four. The mid-year report was presented to this committee back in November. So I'll take you through the key elements of this report and it pulls together the information that was, um, included in the general fund and HRA out term reports that was considered by this committee on the first of July. So starting on page seventy three, section two, this outlines the capital expenditure for the year that was incurred and shows the outturn of the previous year. The table in section two point two shows that the authority incurred a total thirty seven point seven million pounds in twenty four. Nineteen point two million pounds was financed, leaving eighteen and a half million pounds unfinanced. During the year, officers in consultation with section one five one officer continued to minimize new external borrowing by utilizing existing cash balances due to the continuing higher prevailing rates of new debt. As a result, members will note in three point seven that debt levels will be low. The capital's capital financing requirement and internal investment balances remain low compared to previous years. The table at three point eleven shows that the cost of financing debt accounts for six point six percent of the general fund's net revenue stream and the HRA is also six percent. Generally, the higher the figure, the more problematic it becomes, so at six percent, we can be reasonably comfortable with those levels. Moving on to section four, page seventy six, you'll see details of the capitals, um, sorry, council's actual debt levels. As at the thirty first of March, the outstanding loans totaled a hundred and seventy six million. If we take into account the investment balance at the same time of twenty eight million, then the council's net debt position was a hundred and forty eight million. The table on page seventy seven shows our investments as at the thirty first of March, um, and of which internally managed investments accounted for fourteen million pound due to us continuation to use cash balances above taking external debt. All investments placed by the finance team within financial institutions were placed in accordance with the criteria that's set out in our treasury strategy, i.e. high credit rating institutions and their respective durations. We have fourteen million pounds managed by external fund managers. And in section of five and six sets out the investment strategy and borrowing strategy that we followed during the year. You'll see that during the course of twenty four, twenty five, the council took on new loans totaling nineteen million pounds. This included new loans and for refinancing purposes. Um, section eight deals with investment performances, so we had an average internal investment balance of twelve million throughout the year and we achieved an average rate of return of four point nine, which was directly comparable with the overnight Sonja benchmark. We've six externally managed funds, um, these are with property and multi-asset funds. So the property funds have continued to return around four percent and capital values of the Hermes and CCLA funds are slightly up on the previous years. We've previously updated the committee and cabinet on our investment in the Lothbury Property Fund. The fund terminated on the thirty first of March and the, oh, sorry, thirty first of May, and the council has received a capital distribution of three point four million pounds to date, which represents eighty eight point three two percent. The remaining eleven point six eight percent will be received as the final few assets are sold in the coming months. In twenty four, twenty five, we recognized a capital loss on that redemption of nine hundred and fifty two thousand. Um, the loss associated with the remaining distribution will be reflected in twenty five, twenty six. Our Hermes investment is also considering merger with another fund. Voting at a recent EGM has supported this action and we're waiting for final confirmation that the remainder merger requirements are achieved. The council cannot enter the merge fund and as is only available to pension scheme. So therefore, if the fund does merge, the council's investment will be repaid at that time. There is currently an indicative merger date, August. Multi-asset funds are investment assets which hold different types of assets. Again, we hold shares in the fund and we receive dividends. These are very volatile and more immediately affected by economic conditions in equity and share prices. Capital values on two funds have increased compared to previous years, but one was down slightly. It's important to remember that both property and multi-asset funds are long-term investments and values can go up as well as down. Um, that's what I was going to say, so happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you, Alex. Any questions, Derek?
Yes, uh, one, one observation really on, um, page seventy nine, there's a chart about the, um, PWLB projected, uh, interest rates. Um, and I think that, this is my opinion, but I think the prediction that the, the percentage is going to go down is ambitious to say the least because gilts are going up because of government borrowing. And I was, I was, uh, just happened to see a Sky interview today with Helen Miller, who's, she's the new IFS CEO, and she was asked, what's, what are your main concerns? And she said, debt. And the city and the markets are worried about the amount of debt that government have got and they've got no headroom. And that's why gilts are becoming more expensive because that's what the government borrows. Well, it does say on this page that the, the Public Works Loan Board is dependent on gilts. So I think I'm making a bold statement here, but I'm saying that, saying it's going to drop, I can't see that myself. Okay, thank you.
Um, thank you. So the table at six point five and the graph, they're provided by, um, our Treasury Management Consultants, MUFG, who were formerly Link. Um, so I would say at the moment, if we look at, um, PWLB rates at the moment, um, fifty years is around five point eight seven, um, Link's target is four point seven, so yeah, they are tracking quite considerably above that. Um, and that's why we'll see within our, um, debt profile that we've got a lot of money, which is quite short because we don't want to take out long-term invest, long-term debt at those high rates. So we're trying to manage the situation as, as best we can. Um, we are seeing shorter money, the price of that coming down. So at the start of this financial year, we were borrowing about four point seven, we're now down to four and a quarter because obviously that's tracking Bank of England base rate much more closely, so that's, that's our action that we're taking at the moment.
Brilliant, thank you. Um, I've got a couple of questions. On, in four point two, um, talking about debt maturity, can you just expand a little bit on the reason why the five to ten years debt has jumped up, please?
Um, yes, so during the course of the year, we did take on some new money from PWLB. We took it for the HRA, so the HRA can actually borrow at, um, sixty basis points below what's published by, um, PWLB. Um, so we needed to take some money. Um, it was a better rate to take it from PWLB than the market because of that discount that we get. Um, and what we were trying to do was trying to match the borrowing with the best part of the curve to take the money in, so, um, to give us a little bit of longevity, we took some slightly longer, longer money. So I think it was around about the eight, ten years, some of it. Um, and that's, that's why it's, it's gone up from, um, six million to fourteen million.
Great, thank you. Um, and on eight point five point seven, we should really talk about the Lothbury Fund for twenty five, twenty six. Has any capital loss been provided for or will be provided for in the reserves or is the reserves cover it?
Um, so the loss that we made or the loss that we had to account for in twenty four, twenty five was managed by, um, an, an overachievement in our investment income, as well as taking some money from the reserve that we set up um, for this exact purpose. Um, we've managed to make sure that there's sufficient to cover any further loss within Lothbury and also take account of any potential loss that we might see on any of our other funds. But, um, we, at this moment in time, we're not intending to come out the multi-asset funds because obviously we've got a capital loss on those at the moment. And Hermes is about the same level that we went into, so we might get a very small loss or a very, very small gain. So we're just waiting to see what the price is at the end of, um, this month to see and to assess what that impact would be. But there should be enough in those reserves to cover that.
That's great, thank you. Any further questions? No, it's a really, really good paper, really well managed, thank you. Um, the, and lastly, uh, paper ten, annual governance statement, which is, which is, we're noting the content, but also approving it for signature.
Thank you, Chair. As a public authority, the, the council has two core statutory duties relating to governance as legislated by the Accounts and Audit Regulations two thousand and fifteen. First one is to undertake an annual review of the council's governance framework and system of internal control. And the second one is to then prepare and public, um, publish the annual government, governance statements for the authority to represent the last financial year. So the annual review, um, the review of the authority's governance framework and system of internal control for two thousand and twenty four, twenty five was undertaken in accordance with the standards adopted by the council's Code of Corporate Governance. And those themselves are based on the principles of the SIFF Solus Framework, Delivering Good Governance in Local Governments. As part of this review, assurance of the effective operations of the council's governance arrangements has been sought from a number of sources identified at appendix one to the report on page ninety five. The results of the review were duly considered and scrutinized by the council's AGS Assurance Group. Now, this includes all formal governance positions, uh, the section, uh, one five one officer, uh, and her deputy, the monitoring officer, who's the head of legal and the head of internal audits. It was also, um, endorsed by the council's corporate management team. This was all coordinated by the strategic policy manager. And full details of the annual review are presented at appendix two on page ninety seven. The annual governance statement itself for two thousand and twenty four, twenty five, um, the core findings of this, uh, of the annual review, they form the foundations of the annual governance statement. And the draft is presented on appendix three at page one two nine. The key conclusion being that no significant control issues were identified for the authority in two thousand and twenty four, twenty five. However, despite this, there are a number of opportunities to further develop and strengthen the govern, the council's governance framework and system of internal control in two thousand and twenty five, twenty six, with the plan for activity in the coming year presented in section fourteen of the AGS. Following committee approval, the AGS will be signed by the Chair of the Finance and Audit Committee alongside the leader of the executive and the chief executive officer. And I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Pat. Any questions? So, sorry, I've got a couple, sorry, Pat. Um, first one is on E one, uh, which is developing the entity's capacity, where we talk about reviewing the operations, performance, use of assets and an asset management plan, linking back to the internal audit finding around not having the accurate and upstate record of the council's land and building assets. How are we reconciling those, those two papers? Um, because obviously one leads into the other.
I think, I think that is a quite a good point, and I think for completeness, um, should have been included in that actual review. Um, obviously, the, the, the review goes into quite a lot of detail, um, itself already. Um, but I think that's quite a good point and it's something that I'd be happy to take forward, so we can get that included into, uh, the review and the framework itself.
Lovely, thank you, Pat. And then potentially, um, this, this may be similar. On F one, managing risk, um, this committee is now, I think, seeing two iterations of the Fraud Risk Register, which isn't mentioned. I think, actually, I think it's further evidence of compliance, actually, so I think we've actually, we're actually doing a little bit more than that's, that's in here. Um, but also coming back to the, again, the point in the internal audit, thinking about having serve, a different service and corporate risk management process. Will, will we also look at those as part of that assessment as well?
Again, yes, I think for completeness, we need to include, um, that in, in that particular, um, review. So I will speak to the, uh, strateg, uh, strategic property, uh, manager, um, to discuss how we can move this forward and so that for future frameworks, that's, that's included in there as well.
Brilliant, thank you, Pat. Um, I, obviously, I, I think those things are probably where we're doing a bit more than, uh, or we've got additional actions to add in. So I don't think that that would, um, hinder, um, my support for the signing of the statement. But happy to, I guess, ask the committees, everyone happy that we sign the statement? Did you want to come in? Sorry, Jordan.
Yes, sir, thank you. On, um, section fourteen, which is the plan on the document, there's a section there that includes overview and scrutiny. Um, and I think it might just be worth adding there that for twenty five, twenty six, the overview and scrutiny committee has agreed, um, two, two working groups to, to be established. And just next time, if, when drafting this in subsequent years, I think it would be good housekeeping if the chairs of the committees were spoken to prior to the reports being published or prepared.
Thank you. I think it's fair to ask you.
Totally agree. I think that's very reasonable.
Thank you. With that in mind, and with Ben Minchin, I think the full conversation we just had, are we happy to support? Agreed? Thank you. If you indulge, there's also a couple of items of any other business to round, which is item eleven on the agenda, both of which relate to the committee we held two weeks ago, actually, and were both actions to come back with an update. So I'll divert about one update to do with the current, publishing the current set of accounts. And the other is the housing benefit subsidy, which is something that the Grant Thornton signs off. I'll hand over to Pat on both those items.
Thank you, Chair. I'll start with the backlog of statement of accounts updates. I am really pleased to confirm the team has now managed to publish the draft accounts for twenty twenty four, twenty five and the tenth of July. On that same day, we also managed to publish the final statement of accounts for twenty twenty three, twenty four. This actually brings the council up to date and means that in the past twelve months, four sets of accounts have been finalised, plus the latest set of accounts being published at the draft stage, where it's actually currently open for public inspection until the twenty first of August. The council is working closely with its external, so with initial work commencing in the week of the twenty eighth of July, with the main audit currently scheduled to be between October and December. It's envisaged that the council will therefore meet the backstop date of the twenty seventh of February twenty twenty six for the twenty twenty four, twenty five accounts. Happy to take any questions on that particular point, mate?
A question? No, thank you. I think the only thing I would say just for a minute is really just, it's a staggering amount of work that the finance team have done over the last year doing this many reports. I think I'd like to reflect the thanks for this committee for this incredible amount of work that they've done on these.
Thank you. Moving on to the housing benefits subsidy updates, at the last meeting, Paris Williams, Public Sector Audit Director for Grant Thornton UK, promised to provide an update. Unfortunately, couldn't be here tonight, but he did send me through some notes. And I've also put our response as well in these particular comments. So the twenty twenty two, twenty three draft report was actually received from Grant Thornton last Friday, and officers are currently working through this and will provide feedback in the next week or two. So hopefully that will be finalised very shortly. The twenty twenty three, twenty four housing benefits audit, Grant Thornton has completed the initial testing, pending resolution of two queries that they've got with the council. And currently, Gravestown officers are also testing six areas, which are known as, I'm going to read this out, cumulative audit knowledge and experience, which we know as CAKE. So we're currently working on those. They're basically, they are areas that are exceptions. They seem a little bit unusual, so we need to look more closely, drill down into those particular cells of the subsidy claim. And finally, the twenty twenty four, twenty five audit of the housing benefit subsidy claim. Due to a change in testing approach, the council's completion of the twenty three, twenty four CAKE exceptions is needed before they're able to start initial testing. In addition, documents have been requested in order to, for Grant Thornton to then be able to audit two specific modules, which form part of the main statutory audit. So I think in summary, it's fair to say, again, there was a, similar to the statement of accounts, there'd been a backlog on these particular audits. I have to say, that's not down to Gravestown Council. That is down to resourcing by Grant Thornton. But we are now appear to suddenly be moving forward very quickly. So I hope that brings you up to date.
Thank you, Pat. Any questions on that last point? No, any further items of AOB that anyone wanted to raise? No, there are no items in part B, so we'll draw the meeting to a close at twenty twenty one. Thank you all.